This is the Wapaka area school district board of education meeting.
With that, I'm going to ask Mark if you would lead us in the pledge, please.
Pledge and read this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. Let the roll call reflect that all members of the board are here. I would then move on to item four, which would be approval of the agenda.
Move to approval of the agenda as presented.
Move to approve and a second. I do have one item for discussion on the agenda before we vote, and that would be one item under the consent agenda administrative C2 student academic standards. A reference to the attachment, and there was not an attachment on that document. We can either deal with that at the time of the consent agenda, or at this point, we should be doing that in July. We could have another meeting, or last year we did take care of that in August. So I would look to the board as to whether or not you would like to remove item C2 from the agenda, consent agenda, I'm sorry, at this time, or wait until we get to the consent agenda?
Well, I believe that you remove that at this time.
Okay, so the motion to approve is amended?
Yes.
And the second is still, the second at this point? Okay, all right, with that adjustment to the agenda?
I have something to, on the consent agenda, Kelly McKibben's letter of reservation isn't included in the documents, and I don't know, all the rest were.
We will make sure everybody gets that done?
Yeah.
Okay, and on the motion, does that mean we're moving that to August?
We will move it to a future date.
Future date necessarily.
It could be the August meeting, it could be we have a workshop before then, we could actually, on July 31, if there is more time sensitivity on that. But we will take care of it at a next meeting, no later than the August regular board meeting. Okay?
Yep.
All right, with the motion as amended and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Public comment? There being none, we'll move along. Approval of the minutes, we have the June 12, 2018 regular board minutes before us.
So move for approval.
Motion to approve is our second.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, questions, corrections? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Communications, as I mentioned at the opening remarks, board monitoring includes a budget. I will turn it over to our manager, Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, and good morning.
Good morning.
So Mark Gaines stated, "The first step toward success is taking you refuse to be captive of an environment in which you first find yourself." I'd like to talk today about the budget championship, but I'd also like to talk a lot about fund balance and the importance of fund balance and what that means to fiscal health of the district. If you look at our, now I'll give you a better shot of this, if you look at our fund balance over the last seven years. I began the school district in 2011, January, and since then, our fund balance has increased over the years by, for the first six years, $2.2 million. So you can see that in 2011, '12, the fund balance increased to $370,000, the next year, $255,000. The year thereafter, $517,000, then $85,000, then $430,000, and then $613,000. This year, when revenues versus expenses came through, there was a shortfall of $683,000. So for the first six years, basically my tenure, this fund balance increased $2.2 million. This year cumulative, over a seven-year period, is now at $1.5 million. Well, why is there a $600,000 shortfall this year? Well, part of it is due to unbudgeted items that were brought before the board. So what are those numbers that led to that $683,000? Well, the first is legal, legal was up $16,000. Teacher retirement payout, $1,500. Community relations, that's when we have our community relations personnel, individual KIMs of the district presents, $10,612. Board budget was up $13,000, there was current minimum budget of $46,000. High school landscaping out here was up 40, or basically $50,000. The high school remodel, about $38,000. Tuition payout, $8,142, true time, this is a format for Skyward for employee access, was up basically $10,000 for FAS5, is where you get all those charts and graphs. That was up about $7,000. Comet car, $10,000. The human resource consultant, $4,500. The storage lockers, which seem to be a good investment still, because it was a timing effort underneath the bleachers, $95,000. Textbooks, really, up $10,000, middle school weight room, $10,000. The chain gym, there were some safety issues, $4,000. Privacy fencing by the high school parking, that was up basically $5,260, door closures needed, that was up $5,260. Road salt, we have a lot of issues this year with 33 inches of snow, so $10,000. Our transportation budget, up $29,000, well, that won't happen again, because we know we entered into agreement, and that will be a savings of $130,000 this year, approximately $86,000 in insurance savings. So, and there's technology issues, technology things, $375, unemployment up $4,000. Technology, WTI, tele premises, $9,260, Google expeditions, $9,300. The new A business auto cap, $12,500. Sixth grade textbooks and curriculum, $40,000. Tech camp food, $1,100. Our school facility scheduling, $2,570. Chromebook cases, $14,720. Next year, we will not be doing that, talking to Steve, our new technology director. While we're fine copy overcharges, we're probably going to enter into a new copy machine lease, the five years is about up. And then, so total unbudgeted for, $567,813. So that's that number. We also accounted for, and we're very fortunate to have donations for our stadium, from bank firsts, from farmers, from the foundry. We expected to have lump sum payments from each of those individuals, but the foundry chose a different methodology, which was, which was fine, but instead of getting a hundred thousand lump sum, they indicated they'd rather pay $2,750 per month, which we're very fortunate to get, but that equated then to $25,750. So consequently, we counted on the hundred thousand to offset some of those expenditures, therefore, we gave up $72,000, basically that we did, we intended to have that money. So in the long run, unbudgeted total numbers are $667,000. What does that mean? So that means if we didn't do those things, the budget would have been basically balanced, $15,000 shortfall, that's a balanced budget. Even with all this, though, this budget is, all the revenues were $121,000 to the good, our Fund 27 was exactly on, our operating transfer was within $2,000. So the only thing that happened was our expenses were a little bit higher. So I want to go back to talk about what we do as a district, we tax under the lawful revenue cap. And you can see that we do that, and if you go back to this sheet, you can see that 370, in 2011, 2012, we basically increased our fund balance by $370,000, while at the same time taxing $1.5 million underneath the revenue cap. The same holds true here, 2.7, 2.8, 2.7, 2 million, 1.8, 1.2 million underneath the lawful revenue cap. But at the same time, we were being really great fiscal stewards, increasing that fund balance by $255,000, $517,000, $85,000, $430,000, $613,000. So we're doing two things, we're increasing and taking care of our infrastructure, building roofs, taking care of our technology, doing our safety. We're doing a multitude of things with this district, and all our roofs and everything is in great fiscal order. So, which only five school districts were able to do this, and five school districts then increased their fund balance at the same time. So in October, the board has given a preliminary budget, and then at the end of October, the tax levy is set and the board approves a budget. So the board approves a budget and tax levy certification in October. The budget is set by the board. So anything that administration brings forth after is not in the budget. This year, at almost each board meeting, you were asked to approve additional expenses scenarios. If you want to stay within the budget, ask, was it part of the budget the board approved in October? You already know the answer, anything that comes after October is something extra. So I ask you, and I ask you, my friends, to please ask yourselves as board members of the community as a whole, what is truly the value, and I think all budgeting reports are very valuable, of additional treasury reports and balance sheets showing actual previous year's expenditures and budgets? So each year is different, so comparing a previous year to last year tells you what? For the budget is entirely different, changing needs, nothing stays the same, does it? So if indeed the board simply sticks to the budget they approved in October, would it not come up close to what they approved in the past? It shows you it has. But budgets and balance sheets, I love them, I love seeing more sheets, so more data perhaps is really good. Yet if you approve more expenditures beyond October approved budget, it seems really not to matter how many reports you have, does it? So the board of education is in control, the board of directors, so to speak, beholden to all the stakeholders in this district. Seventy percent who pay taxes yet don't have school-aged children. So, and they're on a fixed income, so what do they need? So, I did this fund balance scenario, because I've been in other districts, and I've been in districts that we've had to run referendums to exceed the revenue cap. So I want to talk about fund balance and the importance of fund balance. So if we take this year's expenditures, this first line, and I cast forward, and you can see that we came out with a $667,000 shortfall. Here's our $9.5 million fund balance. If we continue that path, what happens? Well, what happens this, so next year, instead of $667,000 shortfall, we'd have a $1.2 million shortfall, what does that do to our fund balance? It takes it down to $8.2 million, right? So, but then in the next year, same path, three years, this is in three years. If we do the same thing, we have a $1.8, $1.9 million shortfall. What happens then? We have a $6.3 million fund balance. We have to short-term borrow. What does that mean? We have to short-term borrow, it means we have to borrow $3 million, and we have to pay $90,000 potentially in interest. Where does that money come from? It comes from Fund 10, it comes from instructional budget, where do you get that money? You have to make some cuts. So if you continue that path, let's just go a little forward. So we do the same thing, same thing, we're $2.5 million short, we're into a $3.8 million fund balance, we have to borrow $6 million the next year, it compounds. Mr. Johnson talked about compounding, and when the board approved expenditures for salaries, compounding, everything compounds, everything you increase compounds annually. Remember, everything, expenses always go up at least 3%, they never go down, but the revenue limit or the revenue cap, you're lucky to get 1%. And the next budget, after this fiscal year, we know that it's not going to be good for education. We know that. So that's a known, so what happens then in this year? So we continue that road, so we borrow $6 million, we have to pay $180,000 in interest, so now then we have to pay 90, we have to take another $90,000 out of Fund 10. So then, the year thereafter, same road, we're down to $595,000 fund balance, borrowing $9 million, taking $270,000 in short for interest alone. And then the next year, so we're into this, we're into a negative fund balance, that's how fast a fund balance can flip. So you're into a negative $3.5 million fund balance, well, you can't short-term borrow, you have to pay for that within the fiscal year, so what do you do? You go to a referendum to exceed the revenue cap. Those referendums are hard to pass, I've been part of them, I passed them, $1.2 million forever, but once you're down there, how do you rebuild your fund balance? So it took 31 years to build the district's solid fund balance, if you look over the time, 31 years. Add up the people who are here, there is 24 years of Dr. Pest, or Harley, myself, that's 31 years, so time slips through my hands. In three years, I want to illustrate this, I want to have a kind of a warning shot, but I don't really believe in guns, so whatever, I'm trying to give it to you. So in three years, it could deplete it, it's harder to build than to wipe out, that's what I'm trying to illustrate. So don't get lost in people talk about percent ratio to budget, and expenses to fund balance, oh, it's 43%, oh, it's 36%. In theory, what if your fund balance was 100%? What if you had $24 million in expenditures and $24 million in fund balance? Guess what? You'd be set, you'd be invested that money, you'd have money forever, and you would never be in trouble. So the idea to deplete your fund balance is, or have a percent ratio, is kind of an illusion that people get lost in. So if you put Wapaka and Verona school district who borrows now about $4 million in short-term borrowing, they pay $142,000 in interest. If Wapaka was there right now, Wapaka would attain the highest Moody's ratings possible. While Verona put them here, it'd be a terrible bond rating. So it's only the economic business factors and median income that keeps Wapaka from attaining the highest Moody's rating right now, right here. We're still in that position, but I'm sure to get a warning shot as your finance person, that's what I'm saying. So, the school district of Wapaka is in excellent financial position, one could argue, they really could argue this, it's not some falsehood or some ego-driven thing that I'm making up. We could argue that we're one of the best in the state compared to 424 school districts, we still are. So fund balance, I would argue, fund balance is the most important component to a district finances, health. The one should try to increase it each year and never forget, never really forget about percent ratios, or forget about those, to expenses, period, for expenses never go down, they never go down. Do our salaries go down? No. Even if they went up 1%? Do our gas and fuel go down now? So, do our, does our revenue go up? No, it kind of flatlines, and as declining enrollment goes, there's caps in there, there's things in the revenue cap that hold you harmless, if you have declining enrollment, which we do. They hold you harmless, but they keep you to the same, but they really don't increase. The revenue cap is part of the scenario that we're not a, we're not a business, we can't have unlimited revenue. So Warren Buffett says, unearthing, never depend on single income, make investment to create a second source. On spending, if you buy things you do not need, soon you will have to sell things you need. On savings, do not save what is left after spending, but spend what is left after savings. On taking risks, never test the depth of the river with both of your feet, stick one toe in and see how it goes. So do not put all your eggs in one basket on investment, and honesty is an expensive gift, so don't expect it from cheap people. If you look at this year, what I've been doing, so I've been tracking infrastructure the whole year. There's wants versus needs, so I try to, there's a multitude of array coming at me, we want this, we need this, and I'm trying to decipher, as I always have with keeping the infrastructure in play. And this district's in good fiscal health, it's in good physical health, we have $140 million worth of assets, you look around, our facilities are in great shape. So, but there's a multitude of things coming. So this year, there's a different, and believe me, I'll probably, I won't put these colors right, but I'll call them buff, this color. So the buff color is really things that I put in last year's budget, infrastructure, roofs, we needed some roof repairs, $17,000. Here's a breakdown, that went into 1718 budget. We also needed our high school gym sound system antiquated wrong, that went into the budget this year. The theater, in 1996 was the last time we had our lighting replaced, was the last time we had our sound system replaced. We just built a $2.5 million athletic complex, what about the arts? And what about that complex that's running the DAW system? You have now LED lights, you have a community theater that go $56,000. By the time we replace those lights, it will be, there'll be no LED anymore, it'll be something like chips in your head, or something like that, the LEDs will last this lifetime. So when we move forward, then there were other things that came about, but they're not, I don't have, we don't have money for those. And plus, are they a want versus a need? Are they working now? So one of the things are, we knew that commons, there's really kind of more of a want to do that and sound system. The middle school gym, for the month of usage, no, that's $37,000, for the middle school theater, well, that's doing all right. We were able to parlay the chain gym with the old sound system with the theater, and do that with the chain charter school, so that was really a minimal cost of $11,000. But then, there's other things such as, such as, we did the theater, you can see we did the lighting here, and, and then the chain, let's see, so there's a bunch of things. There's landscaping, one of the things I talked about landscaping, there's a, the landscaping in the district, we landscaped that unbudgeted item, $50,000 out there. But there's other landscaping wants out there that were, they wanted basically the middle school for $32,000, WOC for $140,000, chain for $331,000. One of those things is, when you ask yourself the question, does landscaping or roof replacement more important, or boiler more important? So if your roof caves in, where are you going to move 700 kids? Is the landscaping going to draw more children to your district, because you have a demographic, basically captive audience? We don't have, people go to school by demographics and where the jobs are, no matter, we can tell it from our open enrollment. People want to go to this grade school, but they're probably not going to drive to Appleton to get here, because we have a bush in our front yard. So, so that, we have to make decisions. And so when I do this, and I go forward, and I'm going to take you perhaps way too methodically through it, but I want to tell you that everything I'm writing here now, the red items, are basically, I've already purchased or done those into this fiscal year budget. So last year, $508,000, this is a total of $3.1 million of wants versus need. $508,000 of that is done, I figured out a way to chess game that. We have $340,000 in 1819 already accounted for, which we could pay for and still balance our budget. Some of those items are what? They are basically, we painted the middle school gym, which wasn't painted for years, and it looks fantastic. In the budget, this budget will be balanced. But some of the things we didn't do, which is a want versus need, has gotten $96,000 or $100,000 worth of cardio equipment for the high school for a few classes, and people want that. But there's a fitness center across the road, and it's $96,000, and if I look, and I'm trying to do balance this budget, and I'm trying to figure out wants versus need, and I'm not a control freak, and if I get overridden, so be it. But one of the things is, how many exercise bikes do you see by dumpsters? How many treadmills do you see by dumpsters? How often do they get used? How many ratio to students using these? What is that investment worth? That's what you need to ask your question, ask yourselves, and if it is, so be it. But there are some of the things I haven't pulled the trigger on. We have $30,000, $26,000, $35,000 versus curriculum, basically seminars. We have $107,000 that is already expended for in infrastructure of the doors in this high school, but I believe, and that was needed, it's an infrastructure item where we have doors that aren't safe, they aren't working correctly, there's door jams that weren't. But we parlayed that into the safety grant, if we get the safety grant, I believe we can get $20,000 per building and offset that cost. But one of the things when we wrote the safety grant, which I wasn't part of, there's still, they added about $200,000 more in that. I don't know if we could do that, I don't believe we can, but we are doing the doors, because the doors are a safety issue, and it always has been earmarked in our infrastructure 15-year maintenance plan. So as we move forward, you can see there's a multitude of other items too. But my point here is, we already have, we have a multitude of wants versus needs. And that's one of the things we ask ourselves to be fiscally responsible in our own personal budget, does it work? What does it provide? What does it do? We have $100,000 for the lighthouse, that lighthouse is going to be built, it's earmarked in this fiscal year budget, it's going to be built this year, it's going to be built in one year. I don't know where there's, you'll hear or talk about grants, the grant's not for the building itself, the grant's for added items in the infrastructure. So are there any donations to build that house? I don't have any, so I have to be fiscally responsible and tell you, that's going to cost you $100,000, I put it in the budget, it's part of the $340,000. So what's left? About $2.2 billion. We can do things, we can do it all, the law of abundance, we have to do things incrementally, not, I need this shiny object now. That's how you build a budget, time, timing, planning, years, that's why there's a 15-year maintenance schedule, that's why there's a roof replacement plan, that's why there's a parking structure replacement plan. We had an analysis of these parking structures to be cut out from now, from the roadway out and redone, and re-drained, that's about $360,000. We're not going to do that, we're going to cut that road out this year now, and do it for $10,000. We tried to find a way that's cheaper, but in theory, tearing the whole thing out and doing it correct, like we did, we're able to do, wouldn't we tax underneath the max when we actually rebuilt the WOC part, it starts for about $250,000 and made it safe? Because we all know that it's more likely that somebody will be hit by a traffic than a school shooting, so it's safety. And we knew that people were driving over curbs and going crazy. So that's part of the infrastructure. So how did we get into a great position now, health-wise? Health insurance is the second biggest component of our budget, and you hear the talk that we should move to HRA, we should move to a whole different methodology, but why would you fix something that's the best in the business? We are, out of 424 school district, has the best out of all the districts, not crazy going with our high deductibles, of health insurance decrease. We have a 32% reduction over seven years, 32% reduction, which is unbelievable. It's unbelievable, why would you change that? We get a 2.6% reduction this year, the average industry is 7%, other districts would go, what are you doing? We're not paying a consultant to do it. So it's 32% reduction, while if you just do a simple analysis of the industry standard of health insurance, well, over the same period of time, it went up 56%. That's an 88% gap, that's why we could tax underneath the cap, that's part of the reason. Fiscally trying to run those items that aren't instructional, we try to, without tearing up somebody's personal health insurance. That's why a committee in collective decision-making was involved with teachers and support staff and board members. So now I'm going to give you the snapshot of budget, I gave you the fund balance, and you probably went, oh my god, right, this is terrible, but it isn't terrible. But I need to tell the board about fund balance, it's been part of the mantra I've done at three or four different school districts I've been in, fund balance is important. So how does we get to this year's budget snapshot? Well, I guess there's good news, and I'm going to give you some good news, and the good news is that if you go with this year's budget snapshot, even though we had that $683,000 shortfall, this year, if I move this forward, it's $25,000, $25 million, excuse me, in Fund 10 102. So, but how did I get to that number? Well, there's a way, that would have been higher, and it would have been balanced for a few things. One of the things it would have been balanced for, if the board didn't make the decision to go to go, go right way. That's a hundred thirty thousand dollar savings off this budget, I could tack that off. The other thing, part of that plan was when we sold the, uh, property, uh, at the maintenance building, which is going through rate as we speak, we were able to reduce that property insurance, and we're able to reduce with that bus transportation switch, we were able to reduce workers' compensation, all the liability that's involved in that, and that took eighty-six thousand dollars off the top. And then, reduction, now that we are not building that athletic complex and doing things like that, we can take two hundred, basically eighty-three thousand off that and get to what? A balanced budget, within two thousand dollars. So I'm telling you, the budget snapshot for the eighteen nineteen school year will be basically a balanced budget. But I'm also telling you the story behind, when you, when I come in back to you in October, how that budget can stay balanced. So one of the things over the year, and we're, really, we're proud of it, uh, that we have general aid loss every year, where we're calculating that general aid would basically stay the same. And consequently, our taxes were basically neutral or under. We didn't tax, we didn't make up for the differential. Now you can see, as we move forward, this is the first year, actually, we have, uh, more increase than we had aid loss, about three hundred thousand dollars. So, to get to this point. One of the things that would change this, um, with, uh, we have a mill rate, and the mill rate is basically driven by property valuation, which is really out of the control of the board, it's determined by the Department of Revenue. One of the things with property valuation is basically, if property valuation is one point four billion dollars, basically, and just one point five billion. So that drives that revenue cap, more than twenty-four million, more than thirty-four million. We have a thirty-four million dollar budget overall. So if property valuation of one point five billion goes up, in theory, the mill rate goes down. If the property valuation goes down, your individual mill rate goes up. But, the point of that is, is maybe it's, uh, there's, it's kind of a shell game, because nine oh tens times, if your property valuation goes up, your tax, your basic, your, your individual property valuation goes up. So, so it's kind of, uh, it could possibly be a wash. But one of the things I see here, so I estimated the August isn't until the property valuation dollars come forward. And when they come forward, that's when you can make a determination what they are. The safest bet is to determine that property valuation would be flat at one point five billion. So that's what I did, in this scenario, because it's early. And, in the past, I've given you three different scenarios of taxes, of what we should do. This year, I'm saying we just, there's only one scenario for the board. The taxes to, basically, uh, we are going to be at, with, using the whole revenue cap to its full potential. That's what I'm saying. And what does that mean? It means that, last year, we had a ten dollars and seventy-nine cent mill rate, this year I'm projecting at eleven fourteen, but it could really, uh, change if this property valuation goes up, which I believe it will. Because it probably, if it goes up two point five percent, we might be very much close to the same place we are this year in mill rate, for a thousand dollar property valuation. But just in case, it's about a hundred thousand for a hundred thousand dollar home, it's thirty-five dollar increase, a hundred fifty thousand dollar home, fifty-two fifty, as you go forward, seventy dollars, eighty-seven fifty. So, this is what we, you can see where we taxed underneath the lawful revenue limit in eighteen nineteen, I'm projecting that's no longer going to occur. And, here's the taxes that I, uh, figured will be needed for this budget snapshot. It's early, it's not October yet, this will change. So in seventeen, or this would be eighteen nineteen, I'm sorry, I have a misprint here, but, uh, total taxation, font ten, thirteen million point, thirteen point five million. Last year was twelve point eight, but if you get into our debt and the overall tax level, we had sixteen point seven million versus sixteen point two million last fiscal year. You can see how as that scenario goes down, have we, it's about a five hundred thousand dollar increase, but there again, is that unusual? No, because you can see that it happened in fifteen sixteen with about six hundred thousand. So, kind of ebbs and flows, we did an analysis, that's why everything goes up, never goes down. And so, that's what I'm projecting this year. So, people who succeed have momentum, they, the more they succeed, the more they want to succeed, and the more they find a way to succeed. But similarly, when someone is failing, the tendency is to get on a downward spiral, that could even become a self-fulfilling prophecy. Um, let's succeed again, I think we're there. We're not, we're not falling off a cliff, it's not too late. I think if we use our heart, and our inner knowledge and our wisdom collectively, so all the love, I said this at my business manager presentation, right? Love, 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 so, and I think we make decisions with our heart and our head, I think we'll be in a great place. So, that's what I'm telling you in this morning, and it's not the sky is falling, but that's another ball.
Thank you, Carol. I, I brought point out before we go on, that when he was talking about love at that conference, he was not looking at it necessarily. Um, I, you met with Carol about, oh, two days ago, I guess it was, I can't remember exactly when, but find out where he thought this was likely to be going. Uh, it was early, he hadn't run out the numbers, but, um, certainly it did draw some concern on my part. So he sounded a bit harsh at times during this discussion, because I felt that, I, as well as potentially the other members in the board, needed a little, uh, wake-up call. The last thing we want to do is get into short-term borrowing. We've, uh, been there, we know districts that have done that, uh, just to make payroll, uh, and it does nothing but cost money, because borrowing, uh, costs you money, period. Uh, so we certainly don't want to get there. While Carl was kind enough to say, we're still okay, technically, we are still okay, but we need to be very mindful of where we are. Because as he said, if we get to that point that may require a referendum, there's no slime dunk on that. And while I think, uh, the things that the board have evaluated and considered have all been, uh, good things over the years, we just have to be mindful, and I think we've, I belong myself, perhaps others have, to hear, we're one of the few taxing under the cap. Uh, we're in good condition, we're this, we're that. And sometimes that allows you to perhaps get a false sense of security of, no problem. If it's only twenty thousand here, and only ten thousand there, and only fifteen thousand there, uh, when you're looking at them individually on a thirty-four million dollar budget, thirty-six, thirty-four, okay. Um, you know, it doesn't sound like a big amount, but they do become additive, especially those that are expenditures that are year after year or cumulative type expenditures. So, uh, I asked him to, um, make sure that we were mindful of our limited resources from a financial standpoint. Again, he said the sky is not falling, or whatever term you use. I have some concern, I'll be honest with you, and that's just strictly from a business standpoint. So, with that, having said that, thank you, uh, and I'll open it up to questions that you may have for Carol.
Carol, I have several. Um, first of all, on the lists that you have, and I don't know what each, I have about three, do you know how much of that total, um, that were unbudgeted, uh, one-time expenses?
Basically put on a smaller print one, I tried to put one time, uh, a lot of those are one-time.
I understand that. Do you know what the total amount is of that five hundred?
I don't have a calculated, I don't, but I believe, um, most of it is one-time.
Okay. And, some of these did come before the board, I know, but I, I don't think all of them did, is that true?
As I look at it, well, it's probably, you know, we probably didn't bring forward to the board, like legal, or something like that, the budget's rising because it's just a half a cent, so a lot of it perhaps did, but some of it...
Some of it did.
Some of it did, yes.
And, and...
So that'd be correct.
You, you referenced a little bit the financial reports that, um, I recommend because, and we started talking about this before this, this news. Um, part of the intent of that was, I was not getting a good sense of where we were with the, with our, um, fund balance, and those two reports that we'll talk about later do show us where we are throughout the year, is with regard to our fund balance. Um, and, it's valuable to have this information now. I think it would have been valuable had we been doing something like this throughout the year, so that we'd have a better, um, sense of where we were going to be landing with some of these things. And, um, that was one of, we'll talk about that more later when we talk about the reports, but that was one of my, my thoughts about that.
And even the report you brought forward to the, uh, board, perhaps a few years ago with the pie chart, it's basically feeling that you could see, which is a great report, saying that you could basically visualize, if you don't want to read the numbers, that you can see four elevens or the four hundreds are, oh, they're edging. You can see the Zalor and French, which is the big ticket items, are right on budget. And, but you can see the other items inching other way, but, as well, that is a great report as well.
Yeah, that was one that you created.
Well, you told me what to do, and I did it.
Give you credit for that. The, anyhow, let's, we can talk about the reports that I'm, I'm suggesting we consider also, um, because it gives us additional information.
Well, I think in terms of the, uh, your overall, uh, report, Carl, was really well done, and I, I appreciate it. But some of the things on, as long as they're on the page of the fund balance history, and some of the one-time onlys, there's no doubt that some of the one-time onlys that we did, I'll just use the, the common field as an example, was prompted by the fact we needed to do something with the old one anyway, so we have to remember that some of those one-time things pushed us, that were pushed into action is because if we didn't do it here, we would have had to spend three hundred thousand on the old, which we chose not to, et cetera. Some of those is because we had to, we had been waiting for some time to get after them, and we did.
Absolutely.
And so consequently, we, we may, we're not going to build another field this year, we know that, and so some of those big-ticket items that we had last year, as you mentioned, are one-time, and this year may be quite different in that respect.
But as you can see, the athletic complex did affect fund balance. Athletic complex, it was done without a referendum.
Right.
And did not affect fund balance, even though it was a one-time expenditure needed.
Right.
That was budgeted for approved, planned, and that's not part of this.
No, no, it's not, but the overall picture, I think, on some of the, even on some of these one-times, were things that were needed.
Oh, absolutely.
I think every year, there are things that are going to come up, we all know that too. So, I, but I mean, I, I liked your, your presentation from the point of view that, from my perspective, and I, I don't know numbers nearly like you do, and maybe other board members, but I, I like the idea that you remind us that we can't just look at last year's and this year's and say, oh gosh, last year we did, we, we didn't, we did do something, because it's so different. Every year is such a different situation, that we have to keep in mind, kind of look at the long-range picture, not, not necessarily just one year. And, uh, we, we did have a shortfall this year on your fund balance, as you, as you showed, but we had some varying amounts every year for quite some time. I, I think that, that gives us a much better feel for the whole thing. And, uh, even though it sounded a little gloomy, I think you're absolutely right, where I think we are in good shape, we need to be very cognizant of the future. Um, but, you know, it, it's, it's very realistic of where we are, we, we've done some wonderful things over the years here, and are still in great shape, and hopefully we'll continue to do so.
Just so the board does know, I do, I have, of my entire career, built contingency plans in the budget. So, there's contingencies all over the place, year-on-year, one-time expenditures, it's not, uh, without the contingencies, this would have been much worse.
Do you get, don't you get some preliminary things from Madison sometime this month on, uh, on how much money we might receive, isn't usually in July?
Yes, uh, soon, in July.
You haven't heard anything yet?
No, they're a little bit delayed this year.
Okay.
Because I know, last year, it was a year, because the budget was so long, I mean, but this year, it's all been Saturday, so we should be on time, I would think.
Carol, I have two questions. Um, both of them are about curriculum. Um, the curriculum budget expense that was forty-six thousand nine hundred, and then you mentioned the sixth grade curriculum, that was forty thousand.
We had a...
What is that, how is that the curriculum wouldn't be included in every question?
It was, and there was contingency budgeted lines, and perhaps, you know, two hundreds and thousands or more, and those certain lines, but no certain lines exceeded that.
Okay.
And that's, that's why.
Okay.
I mean, there is a, the curriculum budget has, uh, actually gotten more robust, and, uh, and we've actually, uh, we've taken a lot of the curriculum budget away from now the sites, and moved it into one, almost like we have done with technology, so the curriculum director, uh, or whoever that is, adds that budget to move forward. But, there's a multitude of moving parts and changes, so that, that's, you know...
The sixth grade one, it says CB, is that Chromebooks?
Uh, no, I'm pretty sure it is, yeah.
Was it?
And we do have a purchasing lease agreement with Provincial Capital, and it's actually paid through Kansas State Bank, and I've worked with Steve at, and one of the things that we're able to get, uh, constant rotation of at least a hundred twenty-nine Chromebooks, at least, maybe a hundred seventy, it was a hundred seventy-seven Chromebooks for basically fifty thousand dollars, and you can replace those annually at the resale value, and, uh, there's, uh, they'll take them, clean them, sell them back, and they sell them all over the United States, and we'll get a kickback and increase that. So there's a contingency, uh, for constant replacement of Chromebooks within the budget, and, and the beauty of that is, is that if, for some instance, uh, curriculum changes, and all of a sudden, where everybody's using a smartphone, we can say goodbye to all the Chromebooks, and move to, uh, smartphones, say we can get, you know, hundreds, hundreds of those, and just shift, shift it without affecting the budget. But there was added, added things that occurred.
I, I did add up how much the one-time expenses are, and it was four hundred and five thousand and forty-three dollars, so the bulk of it was, was one-time. And, and I agree with you, Pat, I think, um, we've done some wonderful things. It was expensive.
Yeah.
You know, we just have to be cognizant of what, uh, value or need of those one-time things are.
And everything that comes before us is a great idea, and it's wonderful, and, but I think this is really good to help us be mindful, you know, we can't do it all.
At the same time.
Right.
That's the thing, I think, as you said.
And, and as you said, a lot of it is in the timing, you know? We may be able to do something, but not this year, but perhaps in, well, months, might look a little different.
Well, for some of the items that may not be directly tied to, uh, academics or educational items, which is our primary mission, obviously, do we look for more contributions or donations from groups or firms or businesses that may have some specific passion in that area, um, rather than just spending it, and we see what we can do to get some additional financial support for it? Not that the community hasn't been incredibly generous already, don't take that wrong, uh, because they have done, they stepped up in many areas. All right, any other questions on the snapshot?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next slide, um, school board reports on meetings attended, I know it's summertime, I'm not sure that anybody would have had.
I went to a meeting.
You did, okay.
I went to, yeah, I went to a meeting, um, related to the Mission of Hope event, that is going to be on August ninth, this year, at the Park and Rec, um, the rec center, rather than in our school district, where it's been held for a number of years, I brought brochures. Uh, there is a need for volunteers, there's going to be setup, the, the event itself runs from four to seven PM, and setup is going to start at eight, takedown is going to start at seven, and runs about two and a half hours. There are all sorts of things that people could help with during the day, and into the evening. I'm going to work with Marie Mark on to, again, do a mini survey, similar to what we did last year, where we asked people to tell us the mad, sad, and glads, um, similarly to what we did during our larger community conversations, to make sure that we capture as much with our population as we can. And so, anybody who would like to help do that as well would be more than welcome to do that. It's a really nice thing to do. Originally, last year, I had set the brochures or the, the, um, questionnaires on a, a table with pencils, and nobody rushed over... table with pencils and nobody rushed over anxious to fill out a survey form. So I ended up talking with people very much and it was really very interesting, very pleasant. I enjoyed it a lot. So if you are interested in doing it, just let, send me an email, give me a call, I'm happy to check out if people would be interested. There is a, a website, I believe cited on here, if you are interested in volunteering, there's a volunteer registration site, so.
Sandy, uh, on the back, I was just looking at this earlier, it says Contact Community Impact, Inc., uh, Appleton. Are they kind of the overall sponsors? Do they help in some way with the WAPAC connection there?
Do you know, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, I was reading the history of the starting of a young woman in London, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
But I just wondered if, um, if each, each community does it on their own or is there a larger organ, parent organization sort of helps out?
I, no, I, no, Thrive End is very involved.
Okay.
The Department of Health and Community Services at the county churches are involved. Um, the school district has been involved. So it's a wide variety of, of people who come together and I am sorry not to be a concerned.
It's okay, just curious.
Good. Thank you very much.
Very well.
Moving on, upcoming meetings, uh, we have the July thirty-first board workshop, starting at one P M. August seventh, board workshop, starting at one P M. And our regular board meeting for August is scheduled, uh, for August fourteenth, beginning at five fifteen, Betty.
I got it.
Evening.
Thank you.
No, no need to get up early.
Yay.
All right. Uh, committee report, finance committee?
We met, um, I can't remember the date. Um, and talked, had two issues on our, um, agenda. The first was a continuation of our discussion about Fund eighty. My, my goal had been that we would reach some decision with regard to making a recommendation to the board, um, but there were more questions, um, during the discussion that had come up and, and the board, the committee asked for additional information about demographic trends in our community. And so as soon as we have that information available, we'll continue the discussion. It was a good discussion. And then, um, we also had information provided with regard to the possibility of our adding a second police school liaison officer position, um, to our district, but that was an informational item for the meeting and we did not take that. It will no doubt come to the board.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Chain Exploration Center.
So we got the money and we sent a memo to you guys and outlining everything. Um, requirements will be of all of us, so members of the staff and the governance council.
Yeah, I'm going to interrupt you because they're filming and somebody's going to say, what do you mean, we got the money? Could you just expand a little bit on-
Oh, okay, so we, yes, sorry. We applied to the state of Wisconsin for, uh, federal grant dollars and so we applied for six hundred and fifty thousand, uh, dollars approximately. And we received the full award of that money and, um, we had requirements that are coming from the state on how we can spend the funds and then trainings that we will be required to attend, including governance council, administration, and then school board members and the authorizers, so it could be administration as well. Um, so we are very excited and the team was, um, it was an incredible honor. I think there was forty-five that applied and so twenty-six schools this year got the money and it was a big deal because Wisconsin has not gotten grant dollars from the federal government in the last three years. So, um, that's why there were so many applicants this year. And, um, next year, as I was looking forward, um, it looks like it will be tougher and tougher. So it was very lucky that we got it in and, and Sandy and Carl and the administrative team were so instrumental in getting it done. And, um, so I just, I'm so grateful and it's so exciting for the community, so. And it should be a happy moment for Carl as well, especially this morning.
What are you here?
My, uh, congratulations and compliments to all that worked so hard and diligently on that, uh, excuse me, as well as the, uh, Exploration Center as a whole. So much, that goes well beyond the grant, obviously. So, congratulations.
Thanks for your hard work.
So Carl, just one question, where does that appear on our book in terms of the financial? Is that a separate fund now or how does that work?
Yeah, well, we've worked with, um, Rhonda, we're, we're working though with-
Bob, that's the treasurer?
Correct. And, uh, we're quoting it, uh, it's on our books, we're quoting that to a separate project code, so all that will be earmarked through the, they, we're not going to make it overly complicated so they can do the purchase orders as normal and control their own budget. But the six hundred fifty thousand, I believe it's approximately a hundred thirty thousand a year or maybe it's high end on the front.
High end.
High end on the front, however, they're expanding it will be part of, uh, it's, we've, if you've been to Chain lately, there's the infrastructure project going on. They're not, they're knocking our walls and putting, Carl, picking the gems we done. So we've been able to do them off the face, but those are part of our budget. We've done that within our budget. And what they're, they will have the curriculum, their music, um, a multitude of strings, I think, and maybe some office furniture. You guys can explain it better more that, that it would be almost things that are part of the curriculum.
Yeah, so the, the, the criteria for how we spent the money, it could not be spent on construction. It really needs to be focused on curriculum and technology and, you know, one-time startup expenses. And so, um, most, the bulk of the money goes to technology pieces and then our music program. So we are really trying to have a music focus out there as well as, you know, a multitude of other projects and, you know, trying to support the students in, um, whatever avenue that they may take with their projects. And so the money that we budgeted is earmarked for certain, you know, there's amounts that we have set aside for furniture and technology and then the music. And there's other, you know, programs along the way. I think the music is developing that we would focus on. We would be a place, our location for Suzuki in schools to happen, which is with the University of, um, Wisconsin at Stevens Point. And so we would involve them, but then we also have such an incredible music teacher that in, are currently in the district and, um, she is very passionate about work. And so we wrote quite a bit of work instruments into the grant as well. And then she also really wants to focus on musicals as, um, a way for all students to be involved and then hopefully as a fundraiser, so, and a way to use the theater here.
So, so just give me a, for instance, if, and I'm going to just use your name because I know she's going to be out there. Holly Olsen's a new teacher in your system and she decides she needs a piece of equipment in her classroom that would enhance her curriculum somehow. Does she, did have to apply to get the money from, who, who would give her the okay to say, okay, I'm going to buy a new smartphone or whatever it is?
Yeah, so she would come to the, she would first go to Rhonda and then she would go to the governance council and approach all of us. And then I think we would talk about it from there. Um, there's not a ton of wiggle room, you know, if it's a, you know, if it's in technology and then she wants a piece of technology, then that's one thing. If it's something that, um, we, was not originally written into the application, then we find out more information on, um, Thursday and then, on the, on the seventeenth from the Department of, um, Instruction in Wisconsin. And so they will have more information for us and they will have, um, certain revisions that they want us to make to the application that we made. And that's for all schools. It's, everybody that received grant funds is having to go through that process. And so I think the idea is that they just want to offer more trainings and more supports so that they can make sure the schools that they gave money to will be successful.
And also Chain, the C E C will have a share of curriculum budget that all of the schools have.
Sure.
So the, the grant isn't the only source.
No, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
But I just wondered, you know, how the chain of authorization went there, you know, in the final cycle.
And I think the focus too was also on the sustainability piece for, you know, when you're looking at, it's only four or five years. So you get six hundred and fifty thousand dollars over that course and you have to spend ten percent, at least ten percent in the last year. So whatever you're spending, how, how will it be sustainable? And will it be sustainable? I think is the question that, you know, really needs to be asked. And I think goes to what Carl was saying this morning is that there does, you know, we have to look forward to the future and if, you know, it's something that will fill the short term, then, but not the long term, then, you know, that's a decision that the governance council will make and approve or not approve, you know, so.
And are you, are you, um, because of the awarding of the grant, are you then sort of out of the running for anything in the future if you wanted to apply, say, three years from now for another grant? Is that, is that a possibility or is it-
Yeah, we could, uh, apply for an expansion grant and, um, that would be fabulous if we did that. So, and expand to high school.
Well, uh, yeah, so, so it's not out of the possibility?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, I, that is my hope, is that we are filing for an expansion grant.
And may I just say a few, a few words about the, the requirement that the authorizer participate in training? It only has to be one person attending one session. Now, I've signed up so that I'll hit all five of the sessions that are offered for authorizers, but I would encourage any in each of you to, to participate in at least one of them. Many of them are offered online. I am going to be traveling to Tomahawk on July ninth. No, I, nope.
Better get going with yesterday's.
But, no, I wasn't going to Tomahawk. Um, I'm going to Tomahawk.
July twenty-fifth?
Yes, on July twenty-fifth. I'm going to Shawno also if somebody wants to travel somewhere. Otherwise, these are offered as webinars online and, um, you can do those from the convenience of your home. There will be a few later that will be offered online anytime, but, um, right now, the ones that are offered online are at specific times and I'm not sure whether they'll be recorded and offered at other times, but there's quite a variety. And Sarah Hackett, Steve's daughter-in-law, is responsible for organizing all of this.
So, so what is, what, what is the definition, as you understand it, for an authorizer?
It is the body that authorizes the creation of a charter school. And in Wisconsin, for the most part, they're going to be school boards.
Okay. They use that term sometimes?
Yes, yes.
So if, if I might ask, uh, if you could just list, go through the listing of items and for, not right now, um, and perhaps send us an email of to some of the ones that you feel might be of the best benefit or the greatest benefit to this board and this E C.
Okay.
Uh, I'm sure all have value, but that may allow us to get a little better feel because you have a little more information on those than, than some of the others.
All right, all right. I would be happy to do that.
That moves us on to the N A C S A membership.
The N A C S A is the National Association of Charter School Authorizers. They are a, an organization that provides information, let's see if I can find this, information, um, and training to board authorizers to help them be as successful as possible in the creation and sustaining of, um, charter schools. And in fact, the, you'll see point, two point four, item two point four in our contract actually references the N A, the National Association, um, because the statutes require that authorizers, um, consider adhering to the standards of this organization. And so I have made a request that the board consider joining this organization for a five hundred dollar membership, um, because we have one school and it's clear anyone could take advantage of the, the resources that are offered. There is a one hundred and fifty dollar membership that would be one individual person, but five hundred dollars would allow all of us to, actually probably anybody throughout the district who wanted to avail themselves of some of the, the resources.
And it's not an annual fee?
It's an annual fee. There's a fifteen hundred dollar level that would also allow you a discount on signing up for the national convention, but it's not a substantial one. My recommendation would be to go to the five hundred dollar, um, membership. I'm not sure whether this would be accommodated outside of our budget, um, for a school board or could be accommodated within the eighteen, nineteen budget. So it's a, it's a potential.
Under board board expenses.
Could it be covered under the board expenses? So I, what I'd like to do is make a motion that we join the National Organization for Charter School Authorizers, um, at the five hundred dollar level.
Motion is our second.
Steve.
Any discussion?
I have one question, sorry. Um, if, and you showed all of the different workshops coming out. Um, if, if, uh, other board members attended other than yourself, are we authorizers?
Yes, we are. We are the authorizing body. So we are the authorizers.
Okay. So it, it basically, we already are in that position and we are just being updated on how to perform our duties as an authorizer?
Yes.
All right.
How to do the best, okay, best practices and such.
It's sort of a distant, a layer on top of what we're already at. Okay. I'm just trying to get that all down. Okay, thanks.
Sure. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you. This will be very nice to report to the B P I too when we're talking to them about our grant.
Okay, that moves us on to the administrator section. Start with a seclusion restraining report.
So apparently I just take this over, this is just common and that, literally, this is just a, a common approval of each fiscal year. And so the board needs to approve this and it's written by Maureen and it's an annual endorsement of what we need to do to follow to be compliant.
To your knowledge, is there any difference, Carl?
No.
I'll make a motion that we accept this seclusion restraining report.
Oop, this second.
According to Maureen's report, it's an informational item only that she's required to bring the report to the board, but it doesn't have to be, et cetera.
Okay. Okay, with that, are you still making a motion or are you calling a motion?
Well, I'll still make a motion. I still think it doesn't make hurt to do that. I'll accept the, the report as presented.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second?
There's a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item is the at-risk report.
So this would be the same methodology written by Maureen, but this does require her approval. And she gives some data within this documentation of, uh, the numbers. Um, quite frankly, I'm not privy to answer the details of her numbers, but, uh, this is, she gives you the information that, uh, what past year entailed for at-risk students.
Everybody's had the opportunity to review the report and the recommendation. Is there a motion?
I remove approval of the at-risk plan as outlined in the presentation.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. That moves us on to the annual school health summary for two thousand seventeen eighteen.
Well, I guess we, um, we tried to write the report in a way that it was data-driven and fairly self-explanatory. I don't, if you guys have questions on or anything in particular you'd like us to go over or highlight?
or highlight?
Yes, my, my one question is if you could give us just a quick verbal view, if you will, as to how do we compare to prior years when it comes to issues that we may have had in the district with overall needs, requirements?
Sure. So this is in the fourth full year that I've been from the district. And I think we're probably holding fairly steady. You know, every school district experiences between a twenty and twenty-six percent of the population that has a chronic health concern. The percentages that are listed in the report do not include mental health concerns though, or autism, or, what's the word?
Attention deficit.
Or attention deficit. So even our data where we're sitting, I think every building is, besides the chain, is between twenty and twenty-two percent. It does not include those conditions, which we'll probably include into next year. So I'd expect there will be a potentially significant change in that percentage from this year to next year. But there were no significant changes in those percentages from my reports in the last three years. Some of those students have moved, you know, we have some flux in which building has our highest needs students. And we move our staffing as needed to appropriately cover that need. But there, there is not, has not that large change in the need.
I think to just, just, just kind of to just shoot this down a little bit. I would say we have about twenty-nine percent of children that have diagnosed or undiagnosed health conditions. So about close to thirty percent.
Did you say, did you say undiagnosed or?
Diagnosed and some undiagnosed that have symptoms. And we kind of split those two numbers so it doesn't really reflect in the report, which we have due to D P I guidelines to put there what we require to present to D P I.
Just kind of following up on Steve's question though, are there some trends, you know, that we're seeing, I mean, are you seeing more students with allergies or more students with, you know, what, what kinds of things might be happening that may be a little different than, say, five years ago that you're seeing more, whatever? Or is it pretty much the same?
I don't know if there's been a large change in, you know, the seven years, because I worked as a sub here for a few years before I was here full-time. I don't know if there's been a large change in that in a long time. Certainly, Sue, who was here for thirty-four years, would definitely have said there was a large change in the amount of years she was here. I think it's a lot more low level, but definitely it's, there's a lot of autoimmunity. I think we're seeing a lot more, a lot more autoimmunity in our children. There's something environmentally that has changed over the last thirty years that is definitely impacting the health of our students. Because, you know, as she says, when she started, all those years ago would be thirty-eight years ago now. I think there was, you know, one child with diabetes and maybe three or four in the district with seizures and that's definitely not the case anymore. So children.
I served for Sue many, many years ago and there's one thing about the kind of school system.
So I think there's, I think there is a change in the health of our students in many, you know, mental health. Mental health has increased, autoimmunity has increased. There's a lot of need that has definitely gone up and all schools are experiencing that, not just us.
Well, in a perfect scenario, and of course we listen to the budget, but if you were to suggest some changes that we could make, what would they be most, most concerning? Personnel change, meaning having more people? Anything physical in your rooms, your equipment? I mean, is there anything we should know about that might be coming down the bike a little bit?
What a perfect world.
Yeah. We're just talking.
I, I mean, it's definitely the national, the nation, nationwide recommendations, as well as state recommendations, is to have a full-time nurse in every school building. I don't know that that's feasible with our current layout. But as the chain grows, you know, it definitely, at this point, would be nice to see with our larger buildings, with our three larger buildings. But as the dispersion of students gets wider, it's, it's difficult. It's, the recommendation is one per end to every seven hundred and fifty students. So each big building has about, yeah, which is six to seven hundred. Which they've actually, yeah, and they've dialed that back up and say, well, look at acuity and then per building. I'm, this year, I kind of covered the zone of the W L C and the middle school. That's like fourteen hundred students. That's no lack of, no, how do I say it? That causes some lack of sleep on my end some nights as I consider the state charges me with the health and safety of students during the school day and adult school sponsored events. So that's a large job to say the least. And Terry, you're in the high school?
Last year, I did the high school and the chain. And so next year, we are redistributing a little bit, we're shifting. We're going to split the middle school, Jamie and I. And we also are going to have an L P M at the middle school due to our diabetic case law. And Jamie's going to take the chain.
So she'll know. So I'll recover the district after sixth grade, district wide. And then Terry will be covering seventh grade for high school. But that, that takes some creative, that's hard, takes some creative adjustment, to say the least. So, you know, because you have high needs students at every building. And that lunch hour is very busy. So whether it's diabetic students, students with two P D meetings, needs, respiratory needs, medication administration, as well as we directly oversee the staff that provides that direct care to students also. So, just for yourself.
How many health aides do you present?
We do have one per building. We do have one in each building, which is an unlicensed staff. We do have, a licensed staff now will be moving into the middle school. But that's not what the position is tied to.
She's a licensed staff.
She happens to be a licensed staff that's holding an unlicensed position.
Oh, gotcha.
So she is not, it's not an L P M position. It's a health aide position that happens to be filled by a licensed person.
So who covers the district office?
Proximity.
Just, just give me a call.
Okay.
I carry your radio. If it goes off, I'll probably show up too.
Sure.
If it starts squack and I start twitching, then I hustle, so.
All right, other question?
You mentioned the lunch hour being busy, but that does actually trigger an idea or a thought. I don't know if we label the ingredients in the food that kids are served. I know there are a lot of food allergies that children have, and certainly diabetics. And I'm not asking for an answer right now, but in terms of what we're serving to kids, sugar content or whatever, there might be some thoughts with regard to that too, or labeling.
And all of that is, that's all covered by the F D A. So it's part of being federally funded, it's, that's all covered. And we work very closely with the Food Department every year to make sure that they're aware of students with their needs and be less on the building as well as less, less on the campus.
Well, thank you very much for everything, you and everyone under your umbrella, as it were, do for our students. We very much appreciate it. Moving on to item four, Teacher Handbook Language Update. Everybody has had an opportunity to see the proposed changes?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the changes as presented to the handbook.
Motion to adopt the changes.
Set it in second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Steve, I just have one question.
Yes.
So the, it states in the letter, additionally, although not specified earlier, the incentive for retirement and resignation has been updated to apply to full-time professional staff only. In any event, the board will choose applies this language to staff who are not full-time and should be changed. What have we been doing in the past?
This is all brand new.
So, so, or so if you learn?
In the last year.
Right, so, but was this talking about the retirement benefits that were already in the handbook? These are not new.
This is, this is changing the section in the handbook with regard to teacher resignation, which does incorporate what the board approved in this past year.
Okay, so that was just, the, the, yeah, okay. I, I thought this was referring to something that was previous to, to last year. Was that change to the dates, you know, if you let the, the administration know by certain dates, you'd get X amount of money?
The five hundred and the thousand dollars.
Yeah, and that's the new part that we, just that part of the piece of it.
Other questions? Carol, I'm sorry, do we have a motion? Do we do, in a second? Okay, other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Thank you. Next item is retirement, item five, Robert Welch.
I approve of, I approve of grant for retirement of Robert Welch, which I'll be applicable now.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion in second, discussion?
I accept this with gratefulness for the incredible job he's done throughout these years for our students. He's just been a wonderful, wonderful teacher. And I'm sad that he's leaving.
And just as a postscript for those board members who did, he, he would have been happy to let us know in a timely fashion if his health had not interfered.
And he does have plans to volunteer.
Yes, he does. He's very anxious to do that.
Okay, motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, there's a request for two additional part-time educational assistance for special education.
Make a motion to approve this request.
I'm second.
Motion in second. Any discussion?
This seems to be a certain point on the checklist.
It's overdoing it.
Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Next item, possibly revision to Trezor's report format?
Here we go. All right, at your places are a couple of reports that are, one is what is basically, these are both related to Fund Ten. And again, I'll cart back to my wanting to suggest some additional reports that might give us an expanded view of where we are on a regular basis. And I haven't had a chance, Carl and I haven't had a chance to meet to talk further. If, if the board agrees that this would be helpful, we haven't had a chance to talk about what the schedule, what schedule might be possible, whether it be monthly or quarterly, or how onerous or difficult it would be to provide these. But the first one that we're looking at is an operating statement for Fund Ten, the budget versus actual, and it is a comparative. So there's budget versus actual, and then there's a comparison with prior year. And I, I will say from, in my mind, I recognize that the budgets are going to be different each year. One of the things that a prior year look at gives you though, is a sense of what has changed, what new initiatives. It's, it's a way for us to remind ourselves, what are the decisions that we've made with regard to our budget that might have changed from year to year? The format here, the lines, the level of detail is, mirrors what is offered in our annual audits. And you'll see on the report page that you can refer to the audits, with this will be year seventeen and this will be year sixteen. So this is a, these, these are numbers taken from our annual audits and by way of illustrating what the report would look like. And when you get down to the, to the second to last line and, and last line, this is where we'd be tracking where our fund balance is during the year. The second?
Sandy, before we go to the second, can I, can we just take one of these across and you could just maybe explain with Carl here? I, I'm just looking at a number that's not huge. I'm, I'm looking at under expenditure physical instruction, just, it's just an example. Where it says six hundred and ninety-three thousand, and then the final budget was six hundred and ninety-three thousand. The actual budgetary basis was six sixty?
That's what we spent, yes.
Okay, so then the variance with final budget favorable or unfavorable? So thirty-two thousand means it was what exactly?
That we spent less than budget.
Okay.
And so this column does show you whether it's favorable or unfavorable. If we got more money in revenue than we budgeted, that's favorable.
Okay, so, and this is just a hypothetical because it could be any of these columns, trust me. Nothing really about physical instruction here. But why, why would there be a thirty-two thousand that wasn't spent? Isn't that an almost entirely instructional, like for a person? Or is it equipment?
It's, it would be. Go ahead, please, yes.
So the way this is laid out in the D P I format, it looks like it's, it would be a combination of all encompassing. So it'd be salary and non-salary across the Object one hundred benefits and then all the way, it's all encompassing of the one, institute physical education. So as we've seen throughout the years, our salary fringe, one of that's, and you can, that's where Sandy's, I'll call it by chart, Trezor's report, it shows that our salary fringe are really close, because Colleen is absolutely wonderful at creating spread, magnificent spreadsheets. And we, that's why we don't just take a percentage and go forward. We go, we snapshot it, we lock it in in September when we know all our salary and we base that and go forward. So more than likely, this is more that they underspent perhaps in their overall budget from now, personal services perhaps, all the way up to dues and fees.
Okay, okay, so let's just keep going across on the same column there. So the actual budgetary basis, it says, was six sixty-nine. Okay, so that, that means what exactly?
Okay, that's the prior year.
Prior year, okay.
That's what, that compares actual to actual.
Okay, and then?
And then in the last column, it's just, what's the difference between this year and last year? It isn't favorable or unfavorable. It's simply saying, expressing what's the difference. So in that same line in physical instruction, from fiscal year seventeen to fiscal year sixteen, we actually spent eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars less in fiscal year seventeen than we did in fiscal year sixteen.
So the red column, the red numbers are less than the previous, are less spent than the previous year?
Yes.
Okay, I got that.
Yep.
Okay, and could be, I'm coming back to that green column there, Carl. In the thirty-two thousand, would that be an example? I'm just thinking here, if, if we had a retirement of a staff member and then it brought a new staff member, the difference in their salaries, would that maybe accommodate for that thirty-two as an example?
I'd say no, because when we're doing the budget snapshot in September, we have our staff employed.
Oh.
And so the retirement's already done. And so we have our new staff earmarked, we, now you're getting a budget snapshot. We're still filling, filling voids. But in September, we know in that spreadsheet, spreadsheet is basically absolute of who is filling what their salary.
So it's some other sources? Okay.
And one of the things we have to look at, because it is interesting to, to look at where the differences are, is what level of difference is going to warrant a specific explanation, anticipating that there might be questions? That doesn't mean that there could be other questions. And certainly, again, if the board would like to see us do this, there will no doubt be tweaking to this as we go along and we can see how useful it is.
So, so again, Sandy, just, and I'm, I'm just using that same column as an example since we're talking about, so if we got a request, I'll just use that as an example, if we got a request from the physical instruction people at the middle school for a little bit of new equipment, and we could look at this and say, well, last year they spent thirty-two thousand less than was budgeted, would that make a difference than maybe in our decision-making?
Probably, in my mind, no. Because what we're looking at is how does this fit into the whole budget?
Okay.
Not just where does it fit in? You don't get the carryover, do you?
Yeah, I understand, but I just was curious as to how you would.
That's my explanation. Does that make sense, Carl?
It makes total sense. And one of the things that, this, this comparing with internally, I think that's really a wonderful idea. Sometimes we get lost in comparing to external, other districts with, because they use, everybody Sometimes we get lost in comparing to external, other districts with, because they use, everybody reports the same to DPI. All these DPI reports are formulated, uploaded, and we're usually a behind. But one of the things that, there's over 2,000, 3,000 accounts. And everybody, it's not right or wrong, but every district has a little, maybe they'll, if they were right or wrong, auditors would tell us if right or wrong. But everybody records things a little bit differently. So sometimes you see the nuances like, oh, another district is spending more on music, we're spending too much on music or things like that. But remember, they're recording maybe in dues and fees or salaries a little bit differently. There's nuances because you have some free will. And consequently, maybe 30 districts are recording at, like, OPAHA and 400 aren't. And so, when you're comparing all that data to other districts, which caution one to say, well, that's where it gets a little bit, there's not an absolute in there because there's so many variances of how people record things in different business managers and accountants and different auditors. So, one of the things, sometimes it isn't. So, really looking internally, like Sandy has presented, is really probably the best way to look at what you're doing. Look at yourself, perhaps, not at others.
Any other questions about this particular sheet? Then the second sheet is a balance sheet. This is where, again, if you look down toward the bottom, total fund balances, you'll see that's the same number that shows up on your operating statement at the fund balance year end. And so, again, this is just another way, in my mind, to look at where we are with our fund balance and how what we're doing is affecting the fund balance. And also then, it gives you a sense of where our revenues are coming from. And I'm sure there might be some timing issues relate, we might see some variance one fiscal year to the other just based on timing issues, but those will be easily explained. But again, it's another way to look at where we are financially as a way to help us fulfill our responsibility to monitor where we are financially.
I think as I would see a report like this, it would be more monitoring than anything else. And what I would like to suggest at this point is, since you have not had the opportunity to visit with Carol on this, is that you or we made some time to sit down with them. What I don't want to do is cause a tremendous amount of additional time and labor in producing a report if there are other ways that we can and or should be monitoring. But having said that, I want the Board to feel that they have the tools, they need to be fulfilling their fiduciary responsibilities. Carl, I would have said we could have hired a person to do this for you, but since you had the earlier report, we probably won't be doing that. So that's why we'll have that discussion as to how involved something like this might be.
And I'm certainly happy to help at least with initial months, like using, just copying numbers and putting it into the spreadsheet. But that wouldn't be sustainable. So looking at sustainability.
Now, the question would be, what can you download out of the system? Or hop into an Excel spreadsheet that has macros and all, and it was already in there and, well.
Yes.
And is that monthly or is it quarterly?
So I guess before we even sit down, was this something we'd like us to continue to talk about with Carl then?
I would like to have some sort of document periodically so that when we're being asked to fund certain things, we can get a sense of where we're at. And it's nice to see over $600,000 in excess of budget at the end of the year and just to influence the decisions that we're making on the way.
Okay, other questions or comments? If you have some, you can certainly get to Sandy. I hope you've got some time to think about this a little bit more. Again, I don't want to make this time intensive and have you going through a $50 to $60 a week or whatever the numbers would be. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda as modified at the beginning of the meeting when the overall agenda was approved by elimination of item C2, student academic standards, as we are pending the reference to an attachment in that memo. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion?
Just Kelly's letter, yes, do you have that?
I do have it. I was hoping I'd put it in the packet like we did.
We will get those on. Roll call.
Dan Fair?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Mark Golditzky?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Amy Trumerton?
Yes.
Steven Duff?
Yes. All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time. And we will be going back to the evening meeting.
Just to remind you that the 31st?
I'm so hungry to get it up.
The 31st meeting is at what time?
One o'clock. Okay, is there a motion to return? We have two motions to return. I'm going to take one of those as a second. Thank you, everyone.